Stewart Road or truck traffic to come in and out of the facility. And it would be a gravel parking lot and driveway surrounding the building. We have developed a site plan to do all this, to accomplish this construction. And we have submitted it to the Lee County engineer for his review. And I'll be happy to answer any other questions you have about the project.
Any questions from the board? Yes.
Yep.
So define seed warehouse.
A storage and treatment of seed, probably corn and beans seed.
So the tanks on the north, I assume, are soybean?
Soybeans or corn is what they would store in the facility.
On this here path, they show a row of tanks.
Yes. That would be for seed storage.
No liquid.
No liquid.
Any retention pond?
Yes.
For the?
The detention pond, so they would be dry bottom ponds. There's one located on the north of the driveway. One in the center of the two driveways and one on the south of the driveways. So we've got a lot of storm water we have to deal with, we understand here. And obviously, we don't want wet seed. So we provided detention ponds and sized them in accordance with Lee County regulations.
Do we have a copy of this site plan that we can put up on the screen? So that he, whether online or or in person can see what we're talking about. We have the advantage of seeing this in our.
While they're doing that, approximately, how much of the four acres will this building take up?
Well, the building is only a quarter of an acre itself. And then the driveway, if you count the building and the driveway, the gravel drive, you're approximately half of the area would be consumed by that. The rest of that would just be planted as grass.
Well, you're talking about the holding ponds. Does the water run to the west then off that lot, do you think?
The water, the water all drains to the ditch on the east side of Stewart Road there. So all the ponds would eventually empty into that ditch, which flows south down into Stewart Creek.
Okay, so with that, I assume you're controlling the arrow. Can you kind of indicate where the detention ponds are going to be?
That would be the center one, and then there's one to the north of the driveway, the north of the north driveway and south of the south driveway.
Okay, so they're all going to be relatively small detention ponds segregated to allow water running from east to west?
Yeah, water would run from east to west and then to the south along the highway ditch. Yeah, that's why I was kind of looking at that funny. The building's a different shape. This must have been a preliminary drawing, but this on the screen would be more current.
So the seed bins are going to be on the east side of the building?
Yes.
So you have to have gravel driveway to get back to fill those seed bins too?
Correct, the gravel would go around the east side of the building there. Oh, right where the arrow is.
So as compared to what we've got in, we've got a pretty, looks to be square site plan of the building in our packet, but this one is the final contractor's site layout?
At the moment, yeah, I mean, there might be some minor tweaks to it, but the building's not moving. The gravel, no plans to move there. We have adjusted some of the grades in our latest submission to the county engineer for his review on the detention bonds.
Okay, and then how much is going to be in asphalt and how much is going to be in gravel? If you can, if we can get an outline of?
There would, the entrances off the highway, the driveways would be concrete where the radiuses are turning off the highway, and then that would turn to gravel. There would not be any asphalt on the property.
Doesn't code require paved parking areas?
ADA, and I do believe they addressed that, that there was going to be a parking spot for handicap.
So did you do a tile survey? Did you discover any tile in the property?
We did not, but what they'll do is they'll do an exploration trench when they dig the footing for the building. And if they discover a tile, they'll have to reroute it around.
Nothing from the city goes that way, so no sewer lines or anything.
There's no city utilities there. We plan to bring city water down along the highway.
You'll have to speak up into the microphone, I'm sorry.
Sorry, there's no city utilities at the moment, but we do plan to bring city water down.
Okay, you've got residential properties immediately to the north. Are you planning in any type of visual screening?
We have not planned any.
Is there trees now on that north fence line east of the school?
There are some on the far northeast corner of the drawing. There's some trees right there blocking, I think that's screening for that residence. There's a vacant lot to the, maybe we go back to the aerial. So there's trees on that residence there. Then there's a vacant lot, then there's some more trees on the residence, second lot from the Stewart Road. The last lot on, on the corner of Stewart Road there, on the far northwest corner of the site, is a bus garage owned by the school.
Approximately how far then is it from the north property line down to the building, do you think?
Property length? 90 feet.
So big picture, why didn't you put this on the other side of the road with the rest of your stuff?
Well, the other side of the road's already full, especially they're, they're building, they plan on building two new structures on the other side of the road as well. A 2 million gallon UAN tank, a new chemical building. And so by the time those new structures get built on the west side, they're out of real estate. They attempted to buy some additional real estate on the west side from the landowner to the west, and were unsuccessful, so they went across the street and said.
So that blue outline then represents the four acres?
Yes. Are there any other questions from the board? If not, we have any questions from the audience? Don't see any. Hundred.
I think he's getting it wrong, guys.
I think about 400 feet, but it's hard to tell on my drawing with the school being off the, well, here we go. Yeah, it looks like it's about 400 feet.
Any other questions?
No?
Zoom? Anyone from Zoom?
Anybody from Zoom? Have a question? No? Okay. Do I need to go through?
I just double check to make sure there's, although there's no questions, wanted to see if there was any other witnesses that needed to make statement either for or against.
Anybody want to make a statement? We need to go through.
Yep.
Your project, finding of fact.
Do you need to read this letter from the village of Stewart? She talked about it, but you don't need to read it. You don't have to read it. She just said at the beginning that they were.
They were in favor.
In favor of it. Well, in the letter though, it says that, that the village of Stewart zoning board, zoning and board members have had open debate and discussion regarding the seed warehouse building proposed by Nutrient Ag Solutions. We approve and recommend this building being constructed. Construction shall meet all local county and state requirement. I started with significant that they had an open debate and discussion.
Okay. Moving on to the finding of fact, effective of the proposed use upon the character of the neighborhood.
Well, the proposed facility would fit in with the character and design of buildings across the street.
Is that in a form of a motion?
Yeah, one, but I mean, I don't know if there's anything else you want to add to that.
They have a motion that it fits in? You have a second on that?
Are there any other additions to facts on the character?
No, thanks, Bill.
Okay, then we have, as I have it written down, fits with character of properties across the road or street.
Any comments about that?
The only other thing you could say is that most of the other surrounding areas are vacant. The other, even the area going to the school is a large vacant area of distance.
Majority of other adjacent property is vacant, simply?
Going to make that in form of a motion?
Yes.
Okay. We have a second on that one? Good. Any other comments on that one?
Okay. So under the effect of the proposed use upon the character of the neighborhood, it's with the character of properties across the road, majority of other adjacent property is vacant.
There are no other comments? Take a vote on the motion, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries.
But for effect of the proposed use upon traffic conditions?
An increased traffic, for sure.
This was not part of, this was not part of the presentation, but is part of the staff summary traffic report. The petitioner has indicated that truck traffic for the proposed site is significantly less intensive than the fertilizer traffic on the existing site across Stewart Road and is limited to two brief periods of meaningful traffic in the spring and the fall.
So seasonal change in traffic.
They will be filling those seed bins in the fall and winter, but that's only a couple of trucks a week, a couple of trucks a month.
Pretty seasonal increase. Shall we note that it's less intensive than existing business across the road?
I don't know that it's necessary.
Okay. All right, so effective proposed use upon traffic conditions, seasonal increase in traffic.
You could, you could also, as another line item, talk about that they've got two entrances. Designed to have two entrances off of the highway. To handle traffic flow.
Designed
I assume that the traffic flow around the way we can back up.
It's designed to handle traffic flow.
Designed with two ingressy breasts.
The issue from their south is a county road, I'm pretty sure, so I imagine it's supposed to. Wait, has anybody mentioned anything about the weight on that road, weight limits or anything?
I'm not aware of any weight limits on that since it's a county highway.
I didn't know anything was changed, but I know from their school north is a township.
This is a county road at this, at this point.
So he'll, they'll need to deal with the county on that anyway, so.
But there's weight limit then from, you know, March 1st, April 1st, something like that. So they'll bring all the semis for seed beans in before the roads are posted.
Okay, so the effect of the proposed use upon traffic conditions, seasonal increase in traffic, designed with two ingress, egress to aid traffic flow.
Any other comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All carriers.
Effective proposed use upon public utility facilities.
I would say minimal because it's not used that much.
Virtually no water.
But he did state that it's going to be connected to the city water, city water, basically.
For their processes, they will use that water.
On-site septic field. Okay.
I'll read that motion.
Yep. Yeah, since we actually, we've been going through discussion, actually haven't moved on any of them, but appeared, effective proposed use upon public utility facilities appears to be minimal. Connected to city water, onsite septic field.
That's in a form of a motion.
If somebody wants to make that, I'm acting as the scribe.
Don't move. We have a second. You have any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Effective proposed use upon public health, public safety and/or general welfare.
So can we continue to ask some questions?
Spectacular. So we don't, we, we never heard testimony on whether there was any chemicals running stored there. We really don't know about any hazardous waste and.
Maybe speak up like you heard.
I say we didn't, we didn't, we didn't hear any testimony about any chemicals being stored there. I don't know whether you'd call any of the seed, anything would classify as a hazardous waste.
Seed itself.
Yeah, I don't know. Right.
Treatment of the seed.
Or, yeah, I don't know how to handle the soybeans, you know, you treat them with some hazardous stuff. So I don't know whether you could, you know, we don't know about that, but.
No, I mean, based, you know, based on my experience with Alan Shet, 10 years or whatever, there are virtually no emissions of any chemicals in doing this stuff. And the gallons used for treating soybeans are very small. A gallon does 100 bags of beans or something. It isn't anything like, and herbicide business as far as volumes go.
And everything's going to be inside.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Effective proposed use upon public health, public safety and/or general welfare.
Well, I think you should state that we, we, we had no testimony about hazardous materials. Just, just to see that it's stated, had no test. We should have.
I'm going to put that in form of a motion.
Well, I don't know if that's it. I mean, can we add to it and then just?
Yeah, we're going to add to it.
I mean, it's going to, they're going to have to meet all the other public health, public safety and, but general welfare regulations.
One probably ought to put that in.
Yeah.
Now, let me see if I can find some wording to address that. Probably can use the cities. Should meet all local county, state requirements. Okay, I listed that as we'll need to meet all regulations regarding health and safety, meeting all county, state and local requirements.
Another line item to say that they're going to meet all the building requirements. That's sorry.
Think that's a given and we really don't have, it doesn't necessarily fill into the public health, public safety or general welfare category. Not sure where it fits, so assuming the city and the county would be following up on building code issues.
What do you think?
So under effective proposed use upon public health, safety and general welfare, no testimony regarding hazardous materials. Will need to meet all regulations regarding health and safety. Meeting all county, state and local requirements.
Don't move.
Okay.
We've got a motion and a second, like motion. Any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries.
Effective proposed use upon the surrounding properties.
Well, there should be no significant increase in, in dust or noise. Traffic's another question.
Because all the operations they do is going to be in the building.
No dust or noise. You know, we discussed traffic really on the other one, so. They're going to have stormwater detention. There shouldn't be any drainage. They did. They did testify that they're going to do look for tile.
Okay. So the items I have at this time are no significant increase in dust or noise, stormwater detention to avoid runoff to adjacent properties. We'll look for tile and move if necessary.
Don't move. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, effects of proposed use upon environmental concerns. Again, not given as part of the testimony, but provided in our packets. Oh, here it is. From natural resources. Ecological compliance assessment tool, Echo Cat. List no record of state listed threatened or endangered species. Illinois Natural Area Inventory Sites. Dictated, dedicated natural Illinois nature preserves or registered land and water reserves in the vicinity. The information for planning and consult, consultation shows the following protect species may be in the vicinity of the project. Indiana bat, northern long-eared bat, eastern prairie fringed orchid, prairie bush clover and monarch butterfly. Petitioner will need to contact Illinois Department of Natural Resources for further clarification and listing of resources for the site.
So in summary.
No, no apparent environmental concerns, but further consultation is required.
Or they will just follow all state and federal requirements.
Well, we can put that in now, yeah. Okay.
Because all those species are in the tree area, not in the crop ground.
Yep, exactly. That's why I say no apparent. But. No apparent impact, but further consultation with IDNR required.
And I still think you need to make the statement that they will be required to follow all state and federal rules and regulations. This is a catch.
Okay. Adding required to adhere to all state and federal regs.
You have a comment? You have a motion? Don't move. We have a second. You have a motion and a second? Any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
We move on to the recommendation of the full board.
Yes. Move on to the recommendation of the full board.
Somebody needs to make motion.
Somebody needs to make motion.
Well. Well.
Dean makes a recommendation for approval. We have a second?
A second.
Like second to? We have any comments?
Do we want to talk about any conditions or anything? This is a special use, you know, with conditions on.
But I think we put some of those conditions in there about following the rules and regulations.
Well, these aren't conditions.
Yeah, they, yeah, those are.
They're they were, they were things that we cited that they needed to do.
Those are conditions.
That are enforced by somebody else.
Yep.
You got anything in mind, Mike?
Well, they're, those are the enforcements by the, by the health department. They're the enforcements by the roads. It's, it's all those other enforcement groups that they have to make before they can get a building from that.
Right, I understand all that, but I'm just throwing it out. Is there anything else we, we need to think about that?
Do we want them to consider a, a visual screen?
Well, I don't know.
I'm just, I'm just throwing that one out, that would be the type of thing that we'd need to.
It's, it's different than a storage facility and that they won't have much security lighting. It won't even face the houses. The other comment I was gonna make, there's probably about five or six of these same facilities in the county. And most people don't even know where they're at, cause they have very little, no troubles with neighbors or anything else.
Okay. No other conditions?
Well, I worry about the tile. You know, whether. We talked about it, a drain tile.
Yep.
Survey, I think maybe they oughta do that. That oughta be a condition that they do perform a survey. And we do an have at the solar farms and everything else now, you know.
Condition of approval. To require.
That should be.
Okay, condition of approval to require tile survey, not just having them see if they find it when they dig.
People, like the facility across the road, I'd be more concerned about possibility of any chemicals getting in to a tile, you know, but they've, all these facilities, fertilizer facilities, all that loading catch areas anyway, but there's so little chemical being used in the seed thing that nothing will leave the building. Just. It won't be, or the cover or something spills.
Okay, so, prior to the vote. We have a condition of, a condition of approval is to require tile survey prior to construction. Any other conditions?
And thinking of that. Probably you're gonna do something with the water. Eastbound water as far as depending on what they do, if they do, probably, oh, they'll wanna go to the, it's gonna be clean water, they could go to the drainage ditch with it, or they go with the French drain, either one.
Yeah, I don't think it's, it's.
Yeah. Long as they've got the detention ponds that run off, whether they, whether they ev it or just let it run, won't ma, I don't think it'll matter.
But I don't think it's a, an inconvenience to them to do a tile survey and.
No, I don't believe so either.
It'll be to their advantage to know where everything's at.
So. We've got a motion to recommend.
And a motion to recommend.
In a second.
We have a second. A second. And we have one condition on it. And the condition being that they do a tile survey.
Priority construction.
Is there any other comments? Hearing none? The motion is to approve. Motion is to approve, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Welcome. And this will be going before the county board on?
On December twenty first.
On December twenty.
At six o'clock, right here.
Yeah, thank. The next petition of the, is of the evening is in the matter of the petition of Adrian Meatpacking Company, Peter Cabo, four North six ninety-four Magnolia Lane, Wayne, Illinois, six oh one eight four. Petitioner Peter Cabo states as follows, petitioner, contingent upon the outcome of the vote of the Lee County Board has entered into an agreement with property owner Raymond Elmas to purchase approximately four acres of a hundred and eighteen point nine seven acres identified at its permanent real estate index number twenty-one dash twelve dash zero one dash four fifty-one dash zero zero one, the proposed location is situated on Lee Road, approximately two hundred and thirty-one feet west of County Line Road. South Viking by in Willow Creek Township in unincorporated Lee County, Illinois, and is within one and a half miles of the corporate limits of the village of Lee. The property is zoned as agricultural, Ag One Agricultural District with the petitioner respectively requesting a special use in an Ag One Agricultural District for the purpose of developing an animal slaughtering facility in holding tents. Is the petitioner here? Please step forward. Microphone.
Please state your name to the board. Tell us about. My name is Peter Cabo. I'm the owner of Adrian Meat, which used to be located on the north end of town of Lee. Prior to a fire or total loss of fire. We, we approached this property because it's, it's, it's of a larger scale to, to be able to provide ample room for septic required for this type of facility. And just the location of the County Line Road for, for a proper truck route. My father started the business in nineteen eighty-four. So, we've been in business for thirty some odd years, part of the village of Lee. And there's a which is family owned business, will continue operations as, as we, as we did previously in the, in the previous location. So, we will, we would, days of operation would be Tuesday and Thursday, morning and evening. No operations on Monday, the Wednesday and Thursdays are delivery days, so basically after, you know, five or six in the morning, the facility will be empty. And then we would start back all over on Thursday and operate Thursday morning, Thursday evening, and then delivery day on Friday, and then no operations on the weekends. We were six or seven employee facility previously, which we would remain the same, like I said. The square footage of the old facility was, was fifty-five hundred square feet, the new facility will be sixty-four hundred square feet, and that's just for better layout design for the more up to date, more energy efficient equipment to run smoother operations at a, at a better pace. And then, yeah, so we, we just wanna continue on as, as we have been for the past thirty some odd years. Just in a different location that is more feasible to the proper requirements of, of this day and age. Mainly with the septic system, which we had already had approved prior to the fire at the old location. Through Springfield and the EPA, just since we were on the other side of the road, it got approved into Calip County as opposed to Lee County.
You can't hear, you're gonna. Okay, you may have to, you may have to swallow that mic.
Oh, you could take, you could take your mask off.
I'm sorry. We've been in operation since nineteen eighty-four, we've been a part of the Lee, the village of Lee. Since nineteen eighty-four, my father started the business. I joined the company in two thousand and four after graduating college. And pursuing my own, my own career prior to that. I worked alongside my dad for thirteen years until his death. I took over the business solely for the past seven years. Made significant improvements to the, the building, and then we had a fire, so all that was for, for naught. With, with the, the proper layout for the interior flow of a, of a better operating facility. The old, the old property is kind of a weird shaped, weird shaped property, so we, we're looking to, to, to move to a better suited location or, or a larger, larger, a larger land, a piece of land. So, that's why we are pursuing this piece of property, which we can do for four acres, which will allow us to put in the proper septic system, which was approved brief, it was approved already by the State of Illinois, the EPA and DeKalb County. So, obviously, we'd have to go through that for Lee County, since we're on the other side of the road. But it is far, it is far, it far succeeds what we actually, what we actually need for this facility just to, just to, just to be on the safe side. As far as operations, they will continue as they were prior, just Tuesday morning and Tuesday evening, then Wednesday afternoon, Wednesday morning, the trucks leave early in the morning for, for delivery. And then the same thing Thursday, the facility will remain, you know, stagnant over the weekends, and we don't work on Mondays. So, basically, you know, two days, two days a week, the facility will be cleaned, gets cleaned, you know, Tuesday morning after operation and Thursday night after, or Tuesday night after operation. The pens, which we had pens at the old place, it's basically, you know, the, the hogs come in in the morning, on Tuesday morning, prior to start of operation, just one truckload. And again, on Thursday, there will, there would be a truck, my, our delivery truck, which would only be on the site, you know, Tuesday, then it's on the road Wednesday, and then again, you know, comes back empty on Thursday and leaves on Friday.
State your name. Tom Weaver. The type of building it would be is a pre-engineered metal building. And the, the, the site would be designed by a civil engineer that we've used in the past CES out of Belvidere. I don't know for sure if they would have any onsite detention, cause it would need to be designed, would it be designed for code? With, we, we've, we've had a couple other designs done with other properties that we looked at purchasing for this facility. I know that there's onsite parking, paved parking for handicap and the things necessary to, to meet code. The, the main building is a pre-engineered metal building, and the, what, what Peter called the pen is actually a, a completely enclosed post-frame style building. Pole barn type. What else?
The, both, both buildings in itself will be heavily insulated buildings. So, as far as, you know, with, with the old structure, the old place, you know, the pens had, didn't have any drainage or it was much harder to, to clean the pens, so with these pens, they'll have drainage, so they will be cleaned daily to minimize smells, again, there will be no exterior to the pens, everything will be heavily insulated and enclosed. As far as noise, the only real noise would be when, with the unloading of the, of the hogs, which would usually takes about twenty to thirty minutes, maybe not even that long. And other than that, everything will be fully operational within the building. Machines are rather, rather silent. Again, the, the buildings will be adjacent to each other, so there will be no, you know, no hogs to the exterior of the facility, and they will remain on the property, you know, less than you know, three, four or five hours, depending on how, you know, the bumps and bruises of a day of operation go along with that.
Notification for petition twenty-one P fifteen eighty-two was sent by certified mail to all adjacent landowners posted at the property and the zoning board agenda, but this petition was displayed on the Lee County website. A legal notification for this petition was published in the Chicago Road Shopper on November eleventh and in the Dixon Newspaper on November sixteenth, two thousand and one. The required collection of certified mailing receipts seem to appear, seem to be in order, and newspaper invoices have been submitted for the record. In addition to other notification requirements, the village of Lee, whose boundary are within one and one half mile of the proposed petition, was notified. The village of Lee has submitted their recommendation on this petition, and the letter of the village board is in your packet. In the Lee County Comprehensive Plan, the village of Lee's Future Land Use Plan map generally depicts planned neighborhood development on the north and south side of the village. Sanitarian Jennifer Kolbe of the Lee County Health Department has indicated that due to the type of waste generated at the facility of this nature, feels that the petitioner will need to submit an engineered private waste disposal system. The amount of waste and heavy concentration of the waste will require a non-conventional sewage disposal system. Jennifer Boyd, the chief county assessment officer, was asked if surrounded property values would decrease because of proximity of the slaughtering facility. Ms. Boyd replied, in general, no, the county has no sales data that confirms an impact on property value. Ms. Boyd was also asked if taxpayers in general would have an adjustment due to the addition of the facility in their taxing districts. Ms. Boyd responded, generally, she said no, but it would depend on the value of the project. It may actually result in a positive benefit to the taxpayer in the taxing districts they share, as the new property would be picking up the tab of some of the taxing district levy. If the proposed property pays some of the tax, the other taxpayers will pay less. The Lee County Soil and Water Conservation District was, has created a natural resource information report that has been submitted to the file, and the executive summary is in your packet. And the petitioner has submitted a proposed building plan, which is also enclosed in your packet.
Board, do you have any questions?
Yes, several. So, since I've got several, I don't know if anybody else has got one or two that wants to go first. Okay. You indicated that you will have six. Okay, um you indicated that you will have six or seven employees onsite?
That's correct.
Okay, um any anticipation of expansion?
Uh not at the moment, as, as far as structure or?
Yes, I mean, actually both, structure or um capacity?
Uh, structure, structure, no, um not it, not it, no. I'm trying to build it to suit the needs of how large I would want to be and it's, I don't need the headache of being any larger. So um employee base, um. I mean, for me, as, as the owner, I, I feel the more the mayor, I guess, the, the more help, the mayor in a sense of. Of employment, but um as far as like budgetal concerns and stuff like that, I, I don't really see. Where, where the equipment that will be purchased for this new facility is, we're, we're kind of trying to lean more towards the automation side of things. So um some of the, some of the machine, some of the machines that'll be put into play will, will, will eliminate that factor for us.
Okay, um we've got some diagrams of buildings, but I don't see, and I might be missing it, but I don't see in my packet. Where there's an actual site layout of how the building, um actually, I'm gonna say buildings. Cause you indicate, there's been indication that the pen, the holding pen is actually a holding buil- building immediately adjacent. To the processing building?
Yes, sir.
And how are those buildings going to be laid out on the site? How far they set back from the road? How much um margin do they have from. Uh side to side on the property? It's approximately, what was it, four acres?
We, we'll try to position them with relevance to uh like the best placement for the septic system as far as leach field and stuff like that. But as opposed to proper layout, where we'll try to push them as far west as we can on the property. Prior, for, for, for approval, the best way to set up the septic.
Okay, with that picture there is that the existing?
That's the existing building.
Farmstead, that's the prime, the farmstead, is that staying up or coming down?
It's coming down.
Okay.
So it would probably be relative to that, may, but a little, probably a little bit further to the, to the west if we could do that.
Okay. Um so as far as the actual positioning, you're currently waiting for the. Um septic decisions on that?
Y- yes, the um Reed Septic, they're, you know, indica- uh, I don't know actually what town it is, but they're off of Route twenty-three over there. They're in DeKalb County. They're um. Um Reed Septic is the one who designed the sec- septic system, so um they usually come out and do a soil sample of their own. To find which, where to locate it for the best possible. Where it's gonna function the best, I guess. Okay?
Let me interrupt you.
Go ahead.
So, so why, why that corner of the property? The property that you're looking at is a hundred and eighty-some acres. Why do you need to be in that corner as opposed to the west corner of that property?
I don't, I don't understand the question, I'm sorry. What do you?
You, you're buying four acres off of this hundred and eighty acre part, right?
Yeah.
Why do you want that corner other than the, the, I know it's an old building site, but why not the far west corner of that?
The truck route, Lee Road is in um, has weight restrictions, so we could, we would, we would have put an entrance off of county line into that. Into that four acre part, so that way we can, we don't have to worry about load restrictions or weight limits, I guess.
Okay. Um, speaking of traffic, uh what are the number and types of vehicles that'll be making the morning deliveries?
It's just um one, one straight truck, one straight uh reefer truck, the box is twenty-eight feet.
Uh, you said a reefer truck?
Yes, sir.
Refrigerated?
Yes.
So are you bringing in live hogs or?
On, well, live hogs are coming. I was, I thought you meant my trucks were for the deliveries of, of product.
Oh, okay.
Would just be one, one um. Yeah, one tractor trailer semi.
Okay, one tractor trailer semi owned by you or?
No, um I, I purchased my, my hogs from Wickman Farms, so they use um. They use uh trucking companies to deliver their, to the, to deliver to the animals.
So you get the pigs from one farm? All your hogs come from one farm then?
Yes, sir.
And how many roughly do they bring every time?
Uh it, it all depends on orders, I guess, so uh at the old facility, we were, you know, anywhere from, on any given day, it would be a hundred and sixty-five to two hundred. But there's always, it all also depends on, you know, the size of the animals, so they have their weight limits to how many they can fit on an actual load. So for general speaking, if the animal weighs, you know, two hundred and forty-five pounds, they could probably only fit a hundred and ninety-two to a hundred and ninety-five head on the. On the tractor or on the trailer, sorry.
Okay, and you said when you are making the deliveries, I take it, where are you making the deliveries to?
Uh sur- surrounding areas, um and then Chicago.
Okay, and you're just using one straight reefer?
Yes, sir.
Where's all the byproducts go?
Um Clusie Brothers, they come, um they're out of, I believe, Joliet, Illinois, so they would come in. On Tuesday, Tuesday mid-morning, you know, it's like nine AM, take a, take all the matter out after the morning session and then they would return. On Wednesday morning to uh for all the bones and fat from the, from the night, from the night shift.
So you would kill a hundred and fifty or so pigs on a Tuesday then?
Yes, sir. And then, and Thursday.
Okay, so then the. The carcass waste and i- is, goes out on Tuesday and bones trimmings and. Uh what was trimmed off goes out on Wednesday?
Yes, sir. Imme- immediately leaves the location after, after, after the, the shift.
Do you do any smoking?
Nope.
Bear with me, I'm making notes. And I suppose that process repeats on Thursday and Friday then as well?
Uh, well, there's, there's no operation on Friday, but yes, Thursday is the same and then Friday, um our truck leaves for delivery.
Okay, they're not, they're not picking up on Friday?
Oh, yes, sir, they are, yes, sir, they are.
Okay, so Thursday and Friday, the, the removal happens just like it does on Tuesday and Wednesday, kind of a two-part thing?
Yes, sir, like mirror image.
Okay. It, and you're. Since the semi comes in from um the, the farm supplying, so that's not your vehicle and you've got the uh. Just the one reefer and that's stored onsite?
That'll be onsite, um just on Tuesday, Thursday's of operation and then Wednesday, it'll be out to deliver, it'll come back on Thursday and Friday. Um goes out for delivery and then I, I park it elsewhere over the weekend.
Oh, you park it elsewhere, okay. Let's see. Some of the other questions have kind of filled in for mine, so I've gotta bear with me.
That's okay.
So in terms of live animals, this hundred and sixty-five to two hundred or, or less. They're coming in, in the morning, you're putting them into the storage building or the pen building. So that's the limit of onsite at any, at any one time or. For your animals, that's the, I mean, they're in and they're out within, or they're in and processed within a few hours, then I take it.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And you're selling to, and you're selling to existing buyers or established buyers?
Yes, sir.
So you're not having to store some of your product for an extended period of time?
No, that's um, that's the, I guess, the, what keeps us in uh, in competition with the larger. I guess our larger competition is that we, we sell out every day, so. Again, if you came on Wednesday, there would be, you know, a guy cleaning in the facility and, and nothing else.
Okay, um will the facility be refrigerated at all?
There will be a cooler within the center of the facility, so yes.
For storage until the, until the pr- uh the processed hogs are loaded out?
Uh yes, for chill factor, so from, from Tuesday, after Tuesday morning, the, the cooler would be loaded with carcasses. For, for chill down and then when we come back in the evening for, to break down for the boning and, and processing. Um and yes, you know, then they'll go back in the cooler once they're packaged or put in barrels, ready for delivery.
Okay, and will you have a backup generator onsite?
Um, I know, there's a, I don't know, they would made, really made generators for three phase, so rather, that's rather expensive.
Well, I, you know, I'm just wondering because that would impact your ability to sell that meat and then you've also got waste again, so. Especially we, coming into the winter, I know there's been times when power goes out, so. Of course, that'd keep your place pretty cold anyways, I guess.
Yeah.
On the other hand, you put them in the truck and it's a reefer, so you run the.
Yeah, okay, and you've already indicated where the hogs are coming from. Are these in-state or out-of-state?
Um actually, th- some of the hogs are from around the area, they just ship them out to Iowa for sale and then they, they come back. But they're, yeah, potentially from neighboring Iowa and Illinois.
Okay, so it's, you've got some people that are raising them locally, but they're shipping them to Iowa. Um to.
That's above my pay grade, I guess.
Okay.
Better cost efficiency. It's cheaper for me, I guess.
Yeah, okay. We've already talked about, there's not a determination yet on this building site, cause you're looking. Um and I assume there's no environmental sen- admire environmentally sensitive areas or floodways on that property?
Uh no, to, to the north of the property will, where it's gonna remain farmland, I know there's tile in place, so right where that hand is, maybe a little bit closer. Okay, um I'm sure there's several tiles, but from conversations with Mr. Mast, you know, I know there's one. Um in between um the town and, and where the, the site would be.
Yeah, you're, yeah, you've gotta keep talking into that. Sorry, should I swallow? Yeah, so you're not bending your back.
I, I'm, I'm not quite certain where the tiles are, um but I know from conversations with Mr. Mast that. Um in the farm field that will remain to the north, um and to the south of town, that there is a tile. There is tile that runs in that, in that, in that direction. I believe it's east to west.
But nothing else environmentally and no flood, no flood plain or no floodways in, on the four acres that you're buying?
No.
Okay, um talking about the sales, you are not selling retail at all out of that facility?
Um it, it's, I mean, it's always been kind of in discussion, it's a possibility of, of um. You know, if there, if the surrounding areas are, you know, in need, you know, there's, it's, it was, we do wholesale generally, so. Um but we're not opposed to it all. But as of, as of how it used to be and how we would do, be in the beginning, there's no retail.
Okay. How are the products inspected?
Uh USDA inspectors uh are there onsite every, every operational day and then. Uh you know, could be more than a handful of times where a, a veterinarian is onsite. But you generally, maybe three times a month, a veterinarian comes in onsite. But every day of operation, there's, you know, two or three, four inspectors. Yeah, so I'll have onsite office as well.
Okay, um. Let's see, what type of odor control? What type of odor control are you looking at?
Evaporators and um external um. I'm lost for words for the fans that we use. I mean, generally the odors are just, you know, I mean, obviously you're, you're, we have um auxiliary fans. There we go, I couldn't think of it.
Okay, um you started to explain about the odor, go ahead.
Uh but we'll have evaporators and auxiliary fans to, to remove odor, but as far as exterior. There shouldn't be much, much odor because of, of putting drains in the, in the, in the pen area too. So they'll allow us to, to uh wash down the pens daily and remove um any waste that the animals would leave behind while they're, while they're. While they're in the pens and then um the Clusie Brothers with um. How ra- how they're there immediately after, after the morning session and, and then early morning and evening, everything is contained within the building. And then when they come and pick it up, then obviously they load it onto their, under their truck and it's removed from the site.
Okay, um and you broached this, and this is the next part in relative to the odor. Um how will you address onsite storage and disposal of the manure?
Uh the Clusie Brothers will take that.
They, they will take the manure? What is, they going into a pit or is it going into a pit and they're pumping it or?
No, it'll, it'll be swept up and put in place into like garbage, like barrels or garbage cans or drum, drum, I mean, whatever.
Drums?
Drums.
So the. From the holding pen building, it's being, it's being swept up?
It'll be, it'll be power washed and then, or swept up then power washed.
Okay, and then put into barrels and the, and the Clusie Brothers. Um remove those barrels along with the other waste?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
You're out.
You're out. We, I, 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 he's asking about the, the blood when the animals are bled. We, we have a, a, a blood trough, bleeding trough, which then will go into um barrels as well and Clusie removes that as well.
Okay, um. What is the expected timeline for the opening of the new facility?
Uh midsummer?
Okay. You're gonna actually open by midsummer or are you gonna start construction midsummer?
Construction starting in the spring, okay.
I guess that's, that's the end of my questions.
How long would it take to kill that many hogs?
Um generally, we start from the old operations, um with the old equipment that we had. We would start work at five in the morning and we're generally done anywhere, if it was a, if it was a good day. We, we, we do anywhere from twenty-eight to thirty hogs an hour. With the new equipment, it'll be cut in half. The new machine allows us to do fifty-five an hour, so you know, four hours, two, three hours.
How many, how many people are working at that?
On the machine?
In the process of.
The, the same six employees work in the morning and in the evening.
What do you do with the, when you unload the hogs, you got an injured hog or one that you can't process?
Um we have a su- it's called a suspect pen, so we separate that hog from the rest of the hogs and then um. There's a, what's called captive bolt and then we'll, we'll bring him, if it's a, if it's. That's what the inspectors are for, but we um would just put it in a barrel and Clusie would also, also removes that from the site. When they come for the rest of the waste.
So do you ever. Process any deer or any other game?
No, sir. No, sir.
So tell me again why you're not. Back at the same place where your facility was that burnt down?
Um. Yeah, the, the site is really restricted. Uh, it's a, it's an oblong shape. And then um, just with the. The septic system alone, which how uh, to, to fit that site. Uh, the cost jumps up to six figures as opposed to the, this new site where it would be, you know, forty-five thousand dollars.
I don't think technically we could even fit the, fit the facility back on with property lines and. Uh, building that decode. I don't think we'd even be able to get it back on there. The setbacks. If you look at the, the north setback of that building, it's, it's pretty close to property line as it is.
I keep coming back to your choice of site. Why so close to the town? You knew that was gonna give issues. Why do you want to be right on the edge of town?
I necessarily, I necessarily don't want to be right on the edge of town. It's just for, for truck route and. Um. I figured instead of having trucks run through the town like we did previously, they wouldn't even have to enter the town. It would all be on the outskirts of town. And, and, and then neighboring areas, there's nothing really for sale.
You're not gonna use any facilities from the city, right?
Um, there is water, there is water from the, the town. There's a line, it's capped at the moment. So um, we could use that. There is a well uh, on the property as well that we, we would use. Uh, I mean, we could use both of them. I'm not opposed to that. I'm not quite certain actually if the well is potable water, which I also need, so.
You haven't explored the water possibilities yet then?
Um, I'm, from what I've been told, that they are potable. It is potable because that used to be a cattle feed lot. So they had, they had livestock there before. Which they would use the, let the cattle drink and stuff like that.
How much water do you need?
Um, at this point, it's, it's hard to say. You know, previously we used like forty-eight thousand gallons a month generally, um, with the new equipment. And, and the, just the layout of the facility will probably, it'll probably be cut in half.
Even for cleaning and?
Yeah, the old facility was um, where the location of, of, you know, set rooms where the kill floor was in the, in the back of the facility. And the carcasses would basically go through the whole building to get to the, to the cooler. So we were just re-washing rooms. To uh, you know, to. To stay, I mean, we have to clean everything because of, it's, it's food product. Um, and we're inspected, so. Um, with the new layout. Um, you know, wash one room after use and then um, and then in the evening, wash the same different room. Uh, the other, the processing room after use and the cooler. Um, and then as far as just. Equipment wise, the old equipment, it was um, open to air. So, you know, hair would be uh, thrown all over the place. And water was just constantly running. Uh, with the new equipment, everything is, everything is enclosed. And water lines are hooked up to the machines. So it's um. The, I'm, I'm trying to go as green as possible with this building as much as I can. So natural gas will be, uh, you know, all the, all the, all the energy that was used prior will be, will be cut in half.
There is a natural gas line?
Yes, sir.
I think the reason the question comes up of your choice of facility, location compared to where you were. Is that generally speaking on. On any kind of industrial use and alcohol years and industrial use because it may produce some smell. They're normally on the east and the northeast side of the city because we always have prevailing southwest winds.
Or northwest.
What's that?
Or northwest changes season, but.
Yes, but it's basically the same, same thing coming from the northwest. It's pushing it away. And I think that's, that's why the question. Came up as to.
Well, part of the, part of the problem with the, the old site is that it was, it's at the bottom of the town. So with heavy rain. Um, you know, half of my property was flooded from water. Uh, flooded with water, um, which would cause, which then, where the septic system. And tanks were previously placed on the old site. It was just, rainwater would just fill up, fill up in my holding, in the tanks for the septic. So, you know, ha- half of my lot was.
No, I understand that, but I, I'm, I'm. We're talking from a smell factor that I, it goes away from the city if it's on the north. The northeast side of the city. And so you look, almost every city is built around that circle.
What type of documentation that, um, you've talked about there being. Um, minimal exterior odors. Uh, due to the evaporators and the external auxiliary fans. Um. What type of documentation, what sites have you been with the equipment? How do, how do you know that that will have minimal impact on the odor outside the building?
Which odor are you referring to?
Any of it, any, either from a processing standpoint or from a manure standpoint. You know, it, it's obviously with that type of, of facility, it's obviously a, a concern. Would be a concern for the city or for the neighbors. I mean, not that you have any neighbors immediately out there, but as Bruce indicated, you're gonna have prevailing winds. Um, that will direct to the city. So. You know, you've indicated that there will be nominal exterior smell. And I guess my question is. Have you been to facilities or do you have documentation from um. Producers of the evaporators and, and fans that indicate that you will not have external smell issues?
Um, there's uh, Morris Pack in Morris, Illinois. They're directly located in the middle of downtown of Morris. Um. Morris Meats, which is located in the middle of downtown Morris, Illinois. They're, they, they've been oper, they operate every day. Um, then there's North Star Packing, which is in DeKalb. Uh, used to be the old horse plant, which now they do um, hogs. Uh, they have the same, the same equipment. And if you drive around there, there's, there's no smells. The, the, the difference between the old place and the new place is that the old pens. There was like the gangway that would lead into the building, into the facility. Part of it was exposed to outside. So, uh, and then there was also like windows, you know, like on a house, on the pens. These ones will be, um, there will be no, there'll be no windows, but there will be um. Ceiling, ceiling evaporators and um, and then everything will be, there, there will be no exposed areas of the pens to the outside. Like the gangway so that the limits noises and smells. And then with the, with the putting in the drains. And that type of stuff allows us to. To clean it much easier, easier and on a regular basis.
Okay, thank you.
One of the things concerned with is uh. You talk about removing the manure and I would assume you could have just used the septic system for the same thing. Uh, what type, size tank, if they might gave you a rough idea how big a septic. System you'll need, how big a tank, roughly a thousand, two thousand gallon?
Oh, it's much larger than that. It's, we've changed it. We've changed the design several times because of the, the old site. We were gonna do berms. Because of the minimal space that we had. Um. I believe it was. One twenty-five hundred gallon tank and two five thousand gallon tanks.
And that's to handle the, the slaughter?
That's the handle, yeah. Obviously, everything doesn't make it into the barrel when you're, when you're washing. So it's hair. And, and blood that does go into the drain. The system, the system will break it down over time and.
Now, did, did you have to pump those very often or did the sys, system of biologicals break it down?
At, at, at my old, at the old place, we pump daily. This, this, this new system, um. If it functions the way they tell me, we won't have to, it'll break it down and we won't have to, we won't have to um, pump out for seven to eight years.
Um, please repeat the size of those tanks again. From the, well, hold on.
I believe, I, I believe it was initially um, two five thousand gallon tanks and a, and a, either a two thousand or twenty-five hundred gallon tank.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Well. What about? Do you have any questions? Yeah.
So are there any questions from the audience? And if there are. If there are, please come forward.
The other thing we should comment on, we will be able to put recommendations on this petition also.
Well, that's been done. I just wanna let everybody know, um. We just, he just looked up the tank size and there's gonna be three two thousand gallon tanks. And two one thousand gallon tanks.
I shall. Try not to touch it. Uh, my name's Tom Capron. Last name is spelled K A P R A U N. I live in the village of Lee, one forty west Nissens thing. Uh, I, you indicated there were seven employees generally. Um. Are they local, local employees or where, where do they live?
Uh, Sycamore.
Sycamore. And so i- in between the, the, the morning uh, uh. Uh, splitting the uh, splitting them into halves, the carcasses and then the cool down, then you come back later in the evening and uh. Uh, I'll finish, uh, finish the uh, the, the cutting. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And uh, how much, how much uh, layover time is that? Roughly? Yeah.
Well, with the old place, it's, it's hard to judge because the operation will be. Um. Much more efficient. Um, but prior to, you know, if we finished at nine-thirty, we would start, usually would start, you know, six, six. Six or seven in, in the evening. Um. Just because the carcasses need to reach a certain temperature before they can be broken down.
So generally, do, do the employees go home or are they housed there? There's a bunk room or?
No, they go home. They go home.
Because they won't be spending the night or the.
No, sir.
So I have.
Anyone else?
Yes.
My first question I would like to ask. Oh, my name is Terry Boydick. I live at, at three ninety Erickson Gate in Lee, Illinois.
Terry, you've got to speak into that mic.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
All right. Mr. Cabal, you mentioned that you have hogs that are leaving here and then going all the way to Iowa and coming back.
Not my hogs.
Pardon?
Not my hogs.
Okay, so you're telling me, because the, 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 the hogs that you've got brought in before. From my understanding is they came from Iowa, they came from Nebraska and they came from South Dakota. So none of them are local.
Um, they never came from South Dakota, but uh, Kip Anderson, who is a local farmer in Shavana. I bought pigs from him, um. Just between the two of us and they, they sell their, they sell their hogs to Wickman Farms.
Question that I have is many of our people of, that re, that surround the sur, the perimeter of our, our community. That will be directly affected did not have stated they did not get registered letters. Nor did they get the receipt that tells them to sign for it. Can you check and, and submit and make sure every address did get one?
We did check, Terry.
You did check.
Yes.
Um, what is the minimum amount, what is the minimum and the maximum amount of hogs that we can have? Brought in by law before it becomes a, uh, that will be slaughtered when the, that would not. Require zoning change and at what, at what times and how many hogs would it? Uh, does the zoning change happen? Is there, if you do the more than the, the allowed number of hogs? In other words, how big do you have to get? Because how can we even know for sure you won't bring in more than two hundred? That you might be bringing in four hundred. Or you might grow, you might decide to grow.
I'm, I'm not, I mean, it's, it's just, I'm, I'm the sole business owner. It's just, I mean, I don't have my dad anymore. It's just too much work. I don't. I don't need, I don't, I don't want to, to be honest with you. It's just too much of a headache and. Um, I just don't.
Um, is, is it correct, this is your fir, fourth time trying to. You'll have a hearing and, and, and become, get, get a permit to build the facility? Can you tell us about the other three times?
There was only one other time and it was on, off of McGur Road and. There was a seasonal weight restriction that we, on the road that we failed to ma, that we failed to. We, we missed it. So that was, that was the issue. It was only a mile of road where the weight restriction occurred. And um, we discussed fixing the road, but it was just out of means of budget.
What about what happened a, across the tracks? How did that one not work out for you?
Um, John Hodge passed away and um, his, his wife, um. His grandson ultimately decided that he wanted the property. Which John had offered to him before he offered it to me. Then John passed away and then um. John's wife ultimately just uh, gave it to the grandson.
Do you know there's a children's playground directly across the street from where you're going to be flooding hogs?
Uh, I'm aware, yes.
Pardon?
I'm aware, yes.
Um, because I, I can't even imagine. I do have letters from children who have become adults that live near the facility. That will tell their story, their, their public story. Um, you, I, have you walked that, that field or are you familiar with the drainage? Issues that, that occur at that field and what it has done to the surrounding homeowners already, that all the field tiles are broken? Are you aware of that?
No.
The field tiles are broken. And uh. And you have, and you probably have no idea that all of these.
Ma'am, you, you. Ma'am, you need, you need to ask him questions, not make statements.
Okay. Are you aware that most of the neighboring homes have flooding issues because of that field? That water actually perks out of the ground and, and drains underground, the tiles are all broken.
Ma'am, you're making statements again, just ask him if, ask him if he's aware of the flooding at the other part.
Or the flooding that occurs in all of our homes.
No, I'm not.
Are you aware that possibly a state-of-the-art septic system might not work even because, um, are you able to tell us how you would stop large amounts of blood after that, that, the high water table causes the flooding and, and rising of blood that will come out of your septic system?
There, that's why there's so many tanks, um, and there's alarms on the, on the system. So if, if there's any indication of overflow, um, the alarms will let us know and Reed Septic will come and pump out what needs to be pumped out.
Yeah, but it can still, will it drain, will it continue to drain until the, the septic people come? Uh, what about generators? You said you don't have a generator, we've had power failures, and if you have a state-of-the-art septic system, I'm thinking that there's a, a bit of electricity involved with it.
I was, I'm, I've been a part of Lee for thirty-some years, uh, twenty of my own, that where I've worked at the, worked at the facility, the previous facility, I've been a part of all those issues, uh, before, um, where we've lost power, due to whatever the circumstance may be, and, you know, I, I've, I've dealt with them just like everybody else in town has, so. I don't, I don't think I was, I know, I wasn't never the cause of them prior, so.
For being an environmental disaster, what is your plan to mitigate, would you plan to pay for it?
What type of environmental disaster?
Let's just say that there would be what, a flood where blood is actually coming out of the ground, which was, it has happened before, and you know that. I'm assuming you know that.
Blood never came out of the ground, it was due to-
Oh, yes, it has.
Ma'am, don't get argumentative, he's answering based on the question you asked. When there was severe rain with the old facility, we were at the bottom of the town, I had mentioned this earlier, that all the rainwater would flow into our tanks and overflow, and what looks like an excessive amount of blood, which it wasn't, would, would percolate out because of the water. Again, those were old, old facility issues, these are not going to be relevant with the new facility.
And, a- as a slaughterhouse, uh, owner, and someone who has been in the business for thirty years, do you know who Temple Brandon is?
I'm fully aware of Temple Brandon is, and I'm, will be implementing a lot of the designs and systems that she has brought to our industry. So yes, I'm very well, and she's a very exceptional woman, I've read her books.
Miss, where do you live? From there, how many houses away?
I, I live across the field on Erickson Gate, which is up that way, and I see that entire field, I just put a picture window into my kitchen, so I can see the barn that, that is over in that, in that corner.
You're roughly half a mile then.
Yeah, and, but I have a view that you would not believe, it is absolutely breathtaking.
Thank you.
Anyone else would like to ask a question?
My name is- My name is Margaret Mary Collins, and I live approximately a mile-
You're gonna have to speak up, I can't hear you.
My name is Margaret Mary Collins, and I live approximately a mile and three quarters southwest of this proposed site. My question, I think, is directed to the board as opposed to the gentleman.
Yes, you, ma'am, you still need to speak up, I'm sorry.
I can't hear you, and I didn't catch your name.
My name is Margaret Mary Collins.
Okay.
I live one and three quarter miles southwest of the proposed site on Route 30. My prop, my question is directed, I think, to the board as opposed to the, applicant. Okay, can I come back and ask you guys later then? Okay, thank you.
No, I, I think you're right, there's, I'm not sure how we answer it, based on our position, we can't, I mean, Dee might be able to, but-
You want another question? Um, I have a creek that runs through my property southwest of there, uh, called Dry Run, that winds all the way up within a quarter mile of this proposed project. The Army Corps of Engineer won't let me deal with erosion or drainage problems or anything on there without them getting involved in it. That creek drains everything northeast of me. So I'm wondering, from your point of view, do you need to consult with them before you allow anything that's going to affect that drainage area?
Can I ask a question? What, what does it drain?
Well, everything you've-
Everything that's tiled up there drains into-
Everything you've got self-contained, isn't it? Nothing running off of it.
Yeah, nothing's running off of it.
And just to point out, this drainage comes through here. Oh, 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 farm lot. The, uh, well, no doubt it's twenty years old, hasn't been used, or whatever, this, this whole thing needs demolished right now.
Yes, sir.
So that drainage area goes around where his property is, that everybody's talking about, where the water runs out of the field.
But you all are indicating that it's tiled, and so the tile goes into Dry Run.
Pri- prior to any building, you will need to, discuss this with the storm water management engineer.
I'm so sorry, I can't.
You will have to comply with our storm water management.
This is one of my first experiences, so try to bear with it. My name is John Sprinkle. I've lived in Lee, Illinois for a little over thirty-three years. Nice little town, been very, very happy with it. Quite familiar with gentleman's business, because it was on the, uh, north end of town, I would drive by it for years.
Sir, I'm gonna have to cut you off, because you're up here not to make statements, but to ask a specific question.
You seem to think of yourself as being a small business, what amount of dollar business is your meatpacking business doing annually?
Is this relevant? Do I need to answer this question?
The first, the first comment I'll make is-
Bruce, I can't hear you.
I said the first question I'll have is, as a small business owner myself, it's not on a dollar value, on anything, it's on how many employees you have. That's the way the government looks at it. And technically, a small business is any business under a hundred employees. That's the standard.
Well enough. The, the pen you were referring to, that if you have an injured piece of livestock come off, and it's contaminated, or there's a health issue with the animal, and you say you're gonna put it in a s- separate holding area, is that area exposed to the outside in any way, shape, or form, or is this-
Completely sealed.
You did, just so I'm trying to confirm, you did state that you have obviously no plan for a backup power system for the operation.
Correct.
The drainage that works through that area, as I understand, there's a drainage tile that runs through the field that goes back around everybody's homes. Is that gonna be disrupted by any means, shape, or form once you put your facility up and have it operated?
I'm, I don't, I'm, I don't have the answer for that.
Another one that's really important to me, because I've had twenty-some years in a factory, was about safety. Have employees, you can always have injuries. Consider the amount of time and effort you would have to go through to make sure that you've taken care of all your employees in the event that any unforeseen accident should occur.
That's something I've dealt with for the past seven years on my own, and the twenty that I've worked in my family business, so, that's, oh, our employees are always a concern for us.
Had any experiences with the injured employee that required hospitalization?
Um, I'm gonna knock on wood and say, no, I haven't.
Operation going to be basically 100% pork?
Yes, sir.
During this meeting right now, this, this is all to the best of your knowledge, you're at 100% pork, that doesn't mean that you may consider other livestock in the future?
I don't know how to break down a beef, I don't know how to break down a deer, I know how to break down a pork.
Um, and George, still operating the Colusney Trucking Business?
I, I know their names, I know their names, I believe Tom may have retired, I'm not certain on that, but yes. Yeah, very, very nice people.
Is there, in this preparation for the property, for you to be able to put your operation up down where you're judging it, which I wish we had a drawing on the actual area that we were gonna do that, but you don't. Are, are, in your negotiations with Ray Mast, is the building and the structure, everything we're looking at there, that they're just zoomed in on the screen there, is that gonna be part of your property? Or those buildings are right now?
Yeah, those buildings would be removed.
So is Ray removing those and bringing those buildings down for you?
No, I'm, we're gonna, Weaver Construction's gonna do it.
So you worked it out with Ray where that would be removed? The property across from the road, I do believe, is Ray Mast's, also, is it not?
Yes, sir.
And I assume Ray Mast was not willing to sell you any property over on the other location?
I'm, I don't know what location you're referring to.
Roll the location that your fire damage building went down.
He has, uh, tile to write, uh, close to the border of the property, and his water main would then be on, if he sold me property to the north, there's, his water main would be on my property then, if he sold me property.
Because of the questioning, the committee wants us to have it.
My name is Gloria Steele. And I just have one quick question. The holding pens, you said was enclosed in a building. What is, then, when the pigs get out of the holding pen and go to the slaughter area, is it that area enclosed, or are they walking? The pigs, are they walking outdoors to get from one building to the other?
No, ma'am.
Okay, so everything's enclosed. They're connected and enclosed. Okay, that's all I wanted.
What else?
Good evening, um, my name is Cassandra Gatchock, I am one of the village attorneys for the village of Lee. And I'm here at their behest. I do have a couple of questions. So Cabo kinda talked about, there is a well on the property, and then there is a line. Do you intend to get water from the village?
If the village wa- uh, wants me to, I'd be happy to, to contribute to the town like we have for the past, you know, thirty-plus years.
I guess, what are your other options?
The well.
And the well is, has the capacity to handle what you need?
Yes.
Okay. Do you know that if you did require water, uh, that you would have to be annexed into the village? Per the village code?
I would assume that I would just pay a special assessment, like the neighboring people who get water from the village.
If the current line that is out there is not suitable for your purposes, would you be prepared to pay for that line to be suitable?
Yes.
And I, I don't know if this matters to anyone else, but, um, how, how are your hogs killed?
Electrocution.
And is that-
Or stunning, I should say, I shouldn't say electrocution.
Okay, and that's, is that standard practice?
Uh, yep, we have USDA approved the, the machine, and we have inspectors there watching Temple Grandin approved.
Okay, and then I think you said that if there is something wrong with one, you just, can you explain again what you do with that?
If there's a downer, or, um, what, that's basically what it's called, is that it'll gets separated, within the pen area, there's a, what's called a suspect pen, and then the inspector will come and inspect the animal. And if it's not, um, if it can't move on its own, then we, take care of the animal in its location, and then we remove it and place it in a barrel to be disposed of.
Okay, so you, you kill it in the suspect pen?
Yes.
Your other property that you had in, well, I guess you still have, in the village. Is it true that your property has had numerous violations of the village ordinance?
Not that I'm aware of.
Is it true that your property is currently in violation of the village ordinance with the mobile home?
Hmm, I, I haven't received no notifications of that.
How will this facility benefit the county of Lee? How will this facility benefit the County of Lee? You?
I would assume taxes.
And how would this have any positive impact on the Village of Lee?
Employment opportunities.
How long have your current employees been working for you?
Some as far as, you know, 10, 15 years, others, you know, two to five, I guess, like any other employer, you know, there's some come and go.
I think you testified earlier that it's your intention to kind of go more automated. So what is the process and your plan for that, and how many jobs would that eliminate, and what's the timeline for that?
The timeline, the timeline for automation?
Yes.
The equipment will be ordered and part of the building is designed to fit these equipment in, so it's from the jump immediately.
Okay, so is it possible that shortly after opening, you may lay off employees?
No, I need them for the processing part.
I've got one question that we haven't brought up yet, that known nationally, are you part of the government's new program to expand slaughterhouses, they started last year?
No, I'm not, I was burned down. I wasn't able to take advantage of, that's, it was more, I didn't, it was a just solely for expansion, I thought it was also remodeling as well.
I don't know, but they really, after COVID hit, and some of my facilities shut down.
My name is Connie Olson. I've lived in Lee for 39 years. I have just a couple of questions for the gentleman. Number one, which of your employees owns the yellow truck that has been sitting since your, ever since your fire has been sitting and not moved for, what, two and a half weeks? I don't know.
The truck is no longer there, and it was on it's been gone for
A long time.
Several, several months.
The other question was the water thing, because I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the answer. So could I ask the water question? Do you intend to use the line, the water line that comes from the Village of Lee? Is it yes or no?
Is it, I don't know if it's gonna be that simplified, like I said, if there's any way, like I have in the past helped out, we've, we've been a part of the Village of Lee, if we could help out in any way, if that would help the town cure some profits, then, then I wouldn't be opposed to it, but if the Village of Lee doesn't want me to attach to the water, then I don't have to attach to the water.
And it true that the Kennedy family paid for that water a long time ago? The connection to the city? They paid a special fee?
I'm not aware of that, I don't know.
That's what I was told. You say that there's not gonna be any smell. How long did the pool of, I don't know what it was, but it smelled like dead animals, so I'm assuming it was partly blood, I'm a nurse, so it smelled like old blood and feces to me, laid on the top of the ground when the plant was on the north side of town? And I wanna know how he's gonna prevent that from happening again?
With having an EPA-approved septic system that's by far suits the needs of the facility.
And what are you gonna do with your vacant property on the north end of town?
Do I have to answer that question? What do I, I mean, it's my property.
Thank you. I do have someone on Zoom that would like to ask a question.
Somebody on Zoom?
Yep.
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. I forgot to state her name.
Dawn Woodbury. Are you ready?
Yes.
Since there's a park right across the street, is it possible that the children that play at that park can hear the hogs being killed?
I mean, everything's self-contained, so I don't think so, no.
Not even one little noise?
I mean, unless they're playing at the playground at six in the morning, I don't think so.
Will they see any of the dead hogs, or any kind of carcass, or anything like that?
No.
Okay, that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, thank you.
He already had his opportunity.
Yeah, normally, we don't let you go back to ask
follow-up questions, something he just said. Mr. Cable, you indicated that you would be willing to do anything to help the village. Do you know how much money in litigation and attorney's fees this village has spent to get ownership underneath a water building? And this has been going on for near two years.
Yes, it is. I was gonna say, that sounds argumentative, not.
Yeah.
I'm just rebutting his statement, that he would do anything for the village.
No, this, this isn't the time for discussion, it's purely, purely
Good.
I have another on Zoom.
Okay.
Hi, my name's Ryan Roble, I'm actually newly, I bought the school directly across from the proposed slaughterhouse that's supposed to be going up, and right across from the park.
Can you spell your name?
Sure.
Galaxy right now.
It's R Y A N, and my last name is Roble, it's W R O B as in boy, E L. And actually, the building's underneath Dog Time Rescue, it's a nonprofit.
Okay.
And your question?
My question is, I mean, I'm directly across from the proposed site, and also from the park. Is there gonna be any fencing put up that's going to be put across Viking Road, or, you know, the county line road that will be blocking the view of the new proposed building, so that you know, anyone on my side, or anyone from my side where the park's at, wouldn't be able to look into or see any of the hogs?
The building is self-contained, so you won't see any of the hogs, but as for security purposes, though, we have been having discussions of putting fencing around.
Well, yeah, I mean, I understand they're self-contained, but also too, with the trucks coming in and out, obviously, you know, seeing the loading and unloading of it, I mean, are the buildings gonna be big enough for the trucks to be pulled into, to be unloaded, or are the pigs gonna be unloaded outside and then into the self-contained buildings, as opposed?
There will be a loading ramp, which will be enclosed, but you know, there will be some noise or sound that does escape, so, but it'll be, oh, the truck will be facing the street, so the unloading will be behind it, so any visibility will be very minimal.
Okay, and is your business registered as an incorporation or LLC?
It's a corporation.
And are your employees W-2, or contracted out, or paid cash, how are they employed?
W-2.
They're all W-2s, then?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's all the questions I have, thank you.
Thank you.
And Jessica? Jessica?
Yes, thank you. My name's Jessica Galbreth, I'm at 340 South Viking Vi, which is literally next to the school, which is kitty corner from this proposed location of the slaughterhouse. My concern and question is of the noise, I know you mentioned that the kids at the playground wouldn't hear it at 6:00 AM, but I get up at 3:00 to 4:00 AM. Am I going to hear the noise, which I used to hear down the street, of these hogs being slaughtered?
You probably unheard, you heard the unloading of the animals, you weren't hearing the slaughter, because that was within the building, is like this one will be, but the deliveries range in that time, when they would, when they bring, when they bring the animals, so, potentially, but again, the sounds will be greatly diminished as opposed to the previous site.
Okay, and then I have another concern or question for you about the smells. The wind comes from your direct proposed location to my home, am I going to smell any bit of your facility?
I don't, I don't have any knowledge to answer that question.
That is all.
Thank you.
Not showing any other hands.
No other hands? Okay.
Are you processing all great now?
No. No, it's, it was total loss.
Did you go through all of these letters?
Okay. Mr. Chair, we're getting close to our end time. I don't know if there's anybody else that's got any statement of facts, whether that would be doable in the the next eight to 10 minutes. But I think we're gonna probably need to recess if we
Need to extend the meeting.
Yeah. Or continue.
We're talking about whether we continue the meeting and from this point, whether, since we don't have any more questions coming in, are there any specific statements of facts, you have a couple of things. The letters need to be presented.
And the attorney for the city is here, so I didn't know what type of presentation she wanted to make, and if there was time to well
Correct, we still need to allow that to happen, we've allowed them to cross-examine, and so we need to allow for public comment or closing statements as well.
Well, yeah, but if she has any statement of facts, and she, yes, obviously, she'd need to be, if she's opening, making statements, she also needs to be able to be cross-examined, but I didn't know if we could do that in this time, or if we needed to continue the meeting to a subsequent date.
Does Ms. Gatchock have any evidence to present? Does the attorney for the Village of Lee have any evidence to present?
Well, that'll be public comment, and that would be after we make sure that all statement of facts have been brought into play, and there's been opportunity to cross-examine those testifying on those statements. Well, historically, we've had a two and a half hour meeting, yep, so if you wanna continue, I don't
You got everybody here, I think you better continue.
Yeah, we've done that before. I don't care. I mean, we've, we've historically had a two and a half hour meeting limit.
No, I understand that. All of the people that wanna make comments, we don't want how much longer we make space, so.
Yeah.
Keep going.
No, I think we can do it by consensus. Unless Dee has an objection. Okay. Well, we still need to see if there's anybody that's got statements of fact. If you were gonna be doing that, we'd need, what, eight copies?
Just do it in your closing statement.
Yeah, you can present that in your closing statement, rather than being cross-examined. That gentleman said he has facts that he wanted to present.
Yes.
Yeah.
I have some packets for everybody. I'm a simple man. My cellphone still has hinge. The, the first map that you see here comes from Lee County website, the comprehensive plan. There's a future, and future use plan for the Village of Lee on the Lee County side. Let me start off again, my name is Tom Caffern, I live at 140 West Nissen Steigen in Lee. I'm a one-time assistant farm league and little league baseball coach. Well, I assist the coaches. I and my wife are former 4-H leaders in Lee County. Currently, I'm in my second term as a village trustee. So I have a lot invested in Village of Lee and the county of Lee. If you look in the center of the map, that line down the center, that's County Line Road, also known as Viking Vi within the Village of Lee. Up at top is Herman Road at the north end. South end is not marked, but it is Lee Road. I put a red X in the lower right-hand corner of Lee Road and County Line Road, that's where this, where this project is proposed. All of this in yellow with the red stippling. That is, future plan is for planned neighborhood residential. Listen, there is Dry Run, that's roughly the way the water flows, and it flows between two houses and underneath the road, across the road through the park, and then south of County Line Road. At the top is a gray area. Uh, at the top is a gray area. It began its life i- as a fertilizer plant, but it's mostly industrial right now or light industrial. It's had various uses since the fertilizer plant has closed. Uh, the farthest north portions of that was used as a tunneling business where they refurbished a tunneling equipment for use on the Chicago's Deep Tunnel Project, which is completed. So, uh, Mr. Uh, Hodge, uh, he retired from that and that building, that that business has shut up. Uh, and Mr. Cobb was, you know, mentioned earlier, had interest in this area, but uh uh, he, you know, informed me, had asked the board if we would be agreeable with this location and by and large, we were, the village board was, was positive about that, but we had nothing to vote on. We had no site plan. We had a drawing of the building, uh, but you know, you can't do that without a site plan, so we know nothing for us to vote on, but uh, as he said, he was not able to get that purchased. Uh, it's now a farm tractor restoration venture. Uh, if you'll turn the page to the next map, this is on the DeKalb County website. That, that is their version of the a planned usage for this, uh, these, th- this, this land file surrounding Lee. The pink area to the south end is planned for industrial. In the northwest corner within the village limits is a former farmer's factory that made implements for skid, skid loaders. It's now a propane, rural propane delivery business. The proposed site in DeKalb County's rendering is diagonally across the Lee Road and Viking Vi. It's, it's colored in red. They indicate that it's, uh, that means, uh, commercial. But that's, that's not their county. That's not right. That's just for a point of reference. North across the Lee Road from the industrial area is the fire department in that blue area. Uh, the US Post Office. Uh, there's also an apartment building, which is currently, uh, has been under renovation. And the village park, uh, and the playground equipment is directly across the road from this proposed site. Now, if you'll turn to page three, uh, this is, uh, off of Lee County's, uh, code site. Highlighted in there is in the matrix is the, uh, is, is, is the is the, is the proposed business, animal slaughtering. Uh, it's listed as special use within either an egg one or industrial three heavy industry. Uh, it's a special use and restricted use, so that's why we're here. Now, I am not opposed to this business in principle. However, village of Lee, home sales have been stagnant for some time and there has been a recent pickup of sales of, of existing homes that seems to be mostly being purchased by uh retirees and families from Aurora, Naperville and Points East. As we dig ourselves out of COVID nineteen era, I can envision that this is where the market is headed. A savvy developer could develop this, these residential zones to attract more citizens, which would attract more businesses to the downtown area. And maybe more young families will see that it's a great place to raise kids. I raised four and a dog. It's a great place to raise kids, great school district. And if we get enough families in, again, this town, we might even be able to field back another baseball and softball team.
Sir, you're getting to hypotheticals and what ifs. Could you, we're at this time, we're looking at testimony, statements of facts.
Okay.
You gave us some documentation. Could you please get to the relevant point?
Okay. This planned heavy industrial business is in a residential area or planned residential area. And it would make it difficult to sell homes existing or, or, uh, or new, new builds. The planned industrial area, the planned industrial area in pink on the DeKalb side, uh, where is where this business belongs. Uh, and with the added, uh, advantage of it is downwind from all residential areas. Bottom line, this business is in the, in this proposed location is not a good fit for the planned neighborhood. I would ask the board to not recommend approval of a restricted use, special use permit in this proposed location. That's the end of my presentation.
Yep.
Sir, when was the last new home built in Lee?
New home? I would venture to say Johnny Reagan. Okay.
On which side of town?
Uh, probably the last ten or fifteen years.
Great speaking to the mic.
Yeah. On the north or south side of town then?
Uh, north side of town. Mine is probably the last one built uh, on the south side of town and with an eye shot of the property.
And that industrial portion pink you've got shown there, is that a a wet area? At drainage dishes and stuff in there where they've got industrial located?
Uh, I say your question again. I didn't quite understand that.
Is that a low area to be putting industrial in with the drainage ditches and everything going through there in the ponds?
I think those green areas pretty well define the, the waterway. I think that, uh, that green area that kind of follows the railroad tracks and then hooks off to the west. I think that is what's being called Dry Run.
Yeah. And you, everybody's mentioning the school. Is the playground on the north side or the south side, the old school?
It is south and, uh, east. If you could zoom out on that, there is the playground equipment. But if you zoom out the park, uh, right where your cursor is, yeah, that's the playground and the equipment. And then, uh, to the east of that is the fire bar and to the east of that is the baseball field.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, thank you for your time.
Anyone else with statements of fact? Say that again? Okay. Okay. I've gone through these letters. How many of these letters did we get? Okay. I'm gonna bring these up and have them. And then the second thing is.
Bruce, you're gonna have to talk into the mic. The other thing is that petition. If we've got that, that's separate from the letters. I think there's several that are here that are gonna be reading their letters or making comments, but that petition, should we at least get, if not the names, at least get the the commentary of the petition?
All, all of those letters are in opposition to the petition. For several different reasons.
In opposition to the petition?
Opposition to.
Our petition.
Our petition.
But you said there was also a multi-page petition in there.
No.
Multi-page. Actually.
Okay, is that what that?
Individual letters there.
Okay. And that's all that paragraph basically says is they're opposed to the.
First paragraph on every letter says they oppose.
I meant the petition, the.
And the petition says that also.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I knew, understood what the petition itself was saying.
Right.
Yeah, that's what I would, would have, was trying to getting at.
I am a resident of the village of Lee and I am signing to state that I oppose any proposed zoning changes to allow a slaughterhouse directly adjacent to the village of Lee, our homes and residents. In addition, it is important to point out that a slaughterhouse certainly does not belong directly across the street from our children's playground. This project and proposed zoning change simply is not geographically appropriate and most certainly is not the vision we believe any of us has for the future of Lee. Economic growth is important, but should be measured carefully to ensure lasting economic and social success. And I have eleven eighteen signatures. And it appears they're all from Lee. With the addresses.
You have eight. Say earlier that you had a letter from the village, what?
In your, it's in your packet. Read that for us.
The attorney for the village is here, so I didn't know if she wanted to read it or.
Yes. I think Bruce. So you say you would like to read the letter?
She's saying, she's got other stuff, so one of us can read it if we need to.
Go ahead, Glenn.
Okay.
Again, I'm Cassandra Gatchock, uh, one of the village attorneys for the village of Lee. I didn't say it before, um, but my firm is Foster, Buick, Coffin and Lundgren. We are out of Sycamore. We have represented the village of Lee for like thirty years, I believe. I do want to apologize for just getting this to you guys today because we were taking a long time to make sure it was right. Dear board members, on behalf of the village of Lee, here and after the village, please allow this correspondence to serve as the village's official objection to the above referenced petition. There's a typo. The village of Lee Board of Trustees adamantly opposes the petition as it believes an animal slaughtering facility and holding pens would not benefit the village or county in any way that would outweigh the adverse effects the facility would have on residents and the community as a whole. Tishner, Mr. Peter Cabo has in the past considered other locations for the facility that the Board of Trustees feels are better suited for use as an animal slaughtering facility and holding pen. While it is true that Mr. Cabo and his father have previously operated an animal slaughtering facility in the village, the proposed placement for a new facility will severely detriment the county and village by developing the same on the main road leading into the village. This property is directly adjacent to village residences, whereas the property north of town that he had previously considered for his facility is not. Furthermore, the proposed property addressed in the petition is in an area that would affect large portions of the village with unflattering odors. Said what he said, that would inevitably result from an animal slaughtering facility and holding pens. It is the understanding of the Board of Trustees that the purpose of the facility would be to slaughter and hold pigs. Prevailing winds are out of the west and would impact several apartments, the nice center food pantry, the village fire department, the United States Post Office and the village park. While most rural residents are more than likely accustomed to the occasional odor of fertilized fields, the stench that a facility of this kind produces would be constant and unflattering to both existing and prospective business owners and residents. As this board knows, the proposed property is outside the village's limits. However, the property would likely need to be hooked into the village's waterline. It is unknown if there is a waterline plum to this property and even if so, its age and size would almost certainly not be able to accommodate the capacity necessary to service this type of industrial business. In addition to the foregoing, the Board of Trustees understands that while the village does not have a sewer system that would be at risk due to this proposed facility, a septic system to handle the type of waste created by the facility is very concerning. As the board is surely aware, there are many opportunities for the failure of a septic system. A leach field would be depositing the remains of the slaughtered pigs into the surrounding areas. There is a possibility that the same could seep into the village's aquifer, which would be catastrophic to all residents of the village, of the village. The proposed facility would place a heavy burden on the village and its residents while providing no benefit. To asset the village's subject its residents to such a situation is inappropriate and unacceptable. Aside from the many negative impacts such a facility would have on the village and the surrounding area, the proposed use of this property is wholly outside that contained within the Lee County Comprehensive Plan here and after the plan. As indicated in map A six of the plan, this specific parcel of property, along with all surrounding areas, is planned for residential use. The map specifically states planned neighborhood. By allowing an animal slaughtering facility along the main road right outside the village, the board would be deterring future development of this area that would greatly benefit the village and the county as a whole. As the board will undoubtedly learn, very few individuals will be willing to reside next to an animal slaughtering facility. The village of Lee Board of Trustees, on behalf of it and its residents, respectfully request that this board deny the petition filed by Mr. Peter Cabo.
Ms. Gatchick, how many people live in the village of Lee?
Last I checked, three hundred and eleven.
How many?
Three hundred and eleven.
And what the shape is this sewer plant in Lee? Will it handle this material or not?
The village of Lee does not have a sewer. Um, it's all septic. And they're actually in the process of, um, building a new water tower and a new wellhouse and a water line.
But each house has its own septic system, is what you're saying?
Yes, yes. Yeah.
I, I have a quick question because, um, as long, as long as you're presenting this, several of the points in here are addressed in this letter seem to be contradictory to the testimony we are heard under oath today. Was Mr. Cabo given a chance to present to the city?
He has not, no. The first the village heard of this was by receiving the petition from Ms. Duffy.
Okay, thank you.
The other point I guess we should bring up that's pertinent to this testimony, several people talked about uh, building and expansion of the city, yet when the solar farm came up, that's gonna encompass everything from lead around thirty-nine, we only had one person here tonight that attended that. Did you come too?
I was not made aware of that. I, I don't know if.
So I just was wondering whether concerned about this versus not the complete covering of all the land in, in the area over there.
Was a petition sent to the village for that as well?
Come right up to it.
I don't believe the village received one, otherwise it wasn't forwarded to me.
Yeah, they did. It was documented.
Okay, it was not forwarded to me, so I don't know. Is that it?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Your letter?
Closing comments.
Yes, you can do that.
I need to state, state my name again.
Will Letcher.
Carrie Boydick, three ninety Erickson Gate, Lee, Illinois, six oh five three zero. Uh, dearly, Lee County Zoning Board of Appeals, thank you for allowing me to speak today. First of all, I think my first response when I saw the petition was, wow, you just can't make this stuff up. My second response after speaking with many of my neighbors and residents who bordered this project or would be in the path of prevailing winds was deep sadness. The common thread that it was clearly obvious that our hardworking folks have put their blood, sweat and tears into their homes and they were worried that they're. into their homes and they were worried that their lives here in Lee would change forever. This project is not only a nuisance, but if approved would negatively impact the quality of life for their families and our children's family. I have a whole section here, you probably have a copy of my letter about the, the logistics of Lee. I'm not, I'm going to skip it, but it seems to me that struggling communities seem to be the ones that end up with these projects. As I, I, as I met with these concerned residents, a number of long time residents relate stories. Besides writing letters, they would, they would kind of give their story of the old Adria that caught fire in two thousand and twenty. And I'm just going to give a couple of statements. It's all hearsay, but however, it is, it does give an indication of what went on and whether or not we want to go forward. One of the comments, I don't want to see another slaughterhouse and try not to think about it. Another one, I remember when old Adria was here on the night that an injured pig was left outside of the slaughterhouse on the ground screaming all night and finally died in the morning. I remember when the truck carrying the guts and the, carrying the guts away, spilled them all the way down County Road, County Line Road from Lee, from Hardinger all the way to Route thirty and no one came to clean it up. I remember the night or the day that the pig got away and ran to the end of East Kirk Gate, chased by a man wearing bloody clothes and a big knife. There were numerous statements from those living east of the plant that stated living with squealing noise, noise and odor to the point they could not even open their windows. There was one person named Sue Phelps who, who no longer lives in Lee and gave me permission to read her description of what it was like to live when the sound and odors were so bad that I, she states, I lived on the east side of the packing plant for almost twenty years. It was smelly and it was loud. On summer nights, you could hear them unloading the pigs. It sounded like someone screaming for their life. Most of the people in Lee lived on the south or west, west side, which didn't affect them. The wind is usually from the south southwest. If the, it, it should not go on, this, the new plant should not go on the southwest corner of town. It will affect most people if it does get passed. But one thing that's sort of funny, but not really very funny, of course, all of us remember the ice or the yellow truck that was left there for months and months on end despite ongoing pleas from the village board to Mr. Cabo for its removal. Of course, it fell on deaf ears for a long, long time. We all do suffer terrible flooding issues from, from the field that does have the broken tiles, so I, I'm asking you all to really reconsider and, and take a look at what, how the high water table does affect, for whatever reason, there's an incredible high water table. Most of us have anywhere from two to four some pumps in our homes. Unless you are willing to correct the drainage issues, this will only compound and worsen. It is stated that there are outdoor holding pens. Are you going to tell us this won't cause odor and noise and flies? And it won't in any way negatively affect quality of life? During the summer days, many folks just want to sit out and enjoy the peace and quiet. Will that change and will our windows and doors have to remain closed? How do you plan to mitigate the flies, odor and noise? And the fans that you spoke about this evening, it just merely vents it out. It doesn't, and it, it is going to go into the air. Of course, you know that you cannot, unless you incorporate or become a part of the village, that water is not available. If you look at code seven dot one dot one, it will show you exactly what code that, the code will actually state that. And again, I'm just going to end it really quickly. Lee is a great place to live. Economic development is a good thing. We do need jobs and sales tax revenue. But what there is, but there is what is known as dirty economic development and clean economic development. Dirty economic development could seal, could seal Lee's fate, making it impossible to attract the better and brighter businesses. We do not need a slaughterhouse that does not and has never contributed one single dime in tax revenue. I am emphatically not just asking, but I am begging the Lee zoning, the Lee County Zoning Board of Appeals to deny Adria's meat packing requests for a zoning change and permit to build. In short and to end, I am really concerned about the quality of life and the continued economic growth of Lee. But to clarify, I am not opposed to this business. There is a need for it. But this plant needs to be placed in a more appropriate place away from our playground, our kids and our homes. Respectfully submitted. The other letter I just want, it's just a verbal, I will go ahead and pass out. I do need to keep one copy just, just to read it, but this is from Mike Woodbury.
Just read it. It's closing arguments or it's, it's closing statements. So yeah, not closing.
I can read it?
Yeah.
I can't read it?
She can read it.
She can read it.
Oh, okay. It's just dear, dear Lee County Board of Appeals. I reside in Lee. I am the person, this is from Mike Woodbury. I am the person who is responsible on a daily basis and is employed by Lee to monitor our water supply, which includes testing, making the appropriate chemical adjustments and checking the mechanics of our water distribution system. Prior to the fire, Adria was originally operating adjacent to our wellhouse. I have several concerns regarding the safety of our water and opposed the meat, Adrian Meat Packing Company's plan to develop the four parcel, four acre parcel of land on the northeast corner of Lee and Viking Bay. When Adrian Meat Packing was operating inside village limits, it was witnessed during severe rain events. As Lee has a very high water table, flooding would occur and you could see the blood that had leached into the ground, seeping up and pooling in puddles on the ground. Should the bigger facility be built, it would be detrimental for, to the village if we gave water for the following reasons. Much of the water infrastructure, including the well and mains are very old and outdated. Water pressure needs to be within guidelines, so any added strain on the system would be difficult to maintain. There is a possibility that Adrian may request what village water. And it would be detrimental. On, during twenty-four hour periods, it was usually necessary to use more chlorine due to the high water demand. The original plant, when it operated, was much smaller and on most weeks operated only on Thursday night when pigs were delivered and work ended after they were processed on Friday evening. The meat was taken away and sold in Chicago. During these peak usage times, increased healthy chlorine levels would be difficult to balance. Water usage to the average home is six thousand gallons every two months. Average use at this plant during, during processing pigs of only twenty-four hours during, once a week was between forty-three and sixty, forty-three thousand and sixty-six gallons per two month billing period. And I do have back in the back, I have the chlorine logs. So if you want to take a look, it was two, two months prior to the fire and three months after. And I also have the water bills that were the water bill history of, of Adria. And actually, we didn't make that much money. We made about three hundred and fifty to five hundred and twenty-seven dollars every two months selling all that water. It wasn't a great amount of income like it was stated. I will put this, I will give you all of these. And I thank you for your time. Thank you for your time, Stu.
Anybody else?
I apologize, I'm losing my voice. So good evening. My name is Jessica Moser. I reside at three sixty Erickson Gate in Lee with my two children. They were here, but they got tired, so they went home. My property backs up to the field in which this proposed slaughterhouse would be located. I am against the location of putting this slaughterhouse directly across from, directly across from the park as well as directly outside our town. There are multiple reasons. First, directly across the street from this proposed location is a children's park where I take my kids to. Also, it is generally where my teenage son goes to hang out with his friends after they walk around town. If a slaughterhouse were to be directly across the street, I would not want to take my kid there or allow my son to walk there with his friends without me around. Sadly, most of the kids and myself included would not want to go on walks around town as much because the odor would be strong, whether or not there are air filters or not, especially with it being on that side of town. Secondly, in two thousand and nineteen, I had my basement flood due to the pitch of the field, of the, due to the pitch of the field and the broken tiles in that field. I had over eight inches of muddy water in my basement. I had to tear down the walls, rip out my carpet, get a new dryer and have to even, I have to refinish my basement all over again. With the proposed location of the slaughterhouse and the same pitch of the field, I'd be very concerned that any leakage, let alone a failure in the septic system would cause more issues and this time not just water, but probably blood. On at least two occasions over the last two years, I have seen a blood trail going out of town from the, what would be the disposal truck of the intestines and then also a pile of pig intestines sitting in the middle of County Line Road. The intestines took well over forty-eight hours for them to even be picked up or cleaned up. I am asking with my whole heart as a single mom, a trustee on the village board and a longtime resident of Lee that you guys do not approve for him to have this location. Thank you.
My name is Gloria Steele and I've lived in Lee eighteen years and I live on Erickson Gate. And I also was raised on a farm and my dad slaughtered pigs for us to eat. But that doesn't matter. What I'm concerned about is even though they say there isn't going to be much smell, I feel that hogs are hogs and I think we will have smell, especially with the wind coming from the south. And I know the old plan. And I am opposed for it to come into our town. We are going to get a solar system, a solar system, solar panels, which is bad enough to look at. And then north of town, we have a, I call it a chop shop. They cut up vehicles and sell parts or whatever they do. And now we're going to get a slaughterhouse to the south of us. And we retired in Lee eighteen years ago because we liked the peaceful, small town. No noise, no smell, just peaceful. And it's turning out not to be that way. And I am opposed for this slaughterhouse to come into our town. And also I'm opposed to it being across from where the children are playing. I don't think the location is proper. I would think that they could find a location somewhere away from our town and away from our residents.
And what else?
Hi, my name is Jean Michaels. I live at one oh four Peterson Gate, just kitty corner from the proposed slaughterhouse. I've lived in Lee for nearly sixteen years. I've been a village trustee for over seven years. I've been on the board because I love the town. It's a small town. I raised my daughter in Lee and now she's raising my grandchildren. We are about three hundred and fifteen people. We don't have large homes or large incomes. We live a very modest life. We work hard for our homes and our families. I feel that the proposed slaughterhouse location is in too close proximity to residences, to the town's only playground, only ball field, a covered pavilion that is used for weddings, birthday parties, Fourth of July celebrations, etc. I would also like to add that the petitioner did not keep his previous location up. The infamous yellow pickup truck that sat there for close to a year before the fire and months and months after the fire, after the village asked him multiple times to have it removed. Yes, it's finally gone, but not without him waiting for months. Also, we are waiting to have removed is a beat up trailer that's still sitting on his property with broken windows infested with numerous critters that his former employees used to sleep in when they were waiting in between shifts. So that's why we're concerned about, is there going to be an overnight or an overstay between his shifts? Because that's how he used to do it. This trailer is disgusting. It's not fit to anyone to stay in and it needs to be removed from the property and he's, hasn't done. Like I said, Mr. Cabo hasn't done that, so he is noncompliant when asked by the village to take care of these matters. Why should we trust Mr. Cabo to be compliant at the new location if he's not compliant with his old location? I ask you very specifically, do not approve this location. It's not good for our town. It's not good for our families. It's not good for our kids. Thank you.
My name is Garrett Galbraith. I am the Lee Fire Chief in town. I'm a resident. I live at three forty South Viking Bay, directly north of the school. Volunteer fire service in a whole is losing membership across the board. Having a facility of this nature so close to proximity will be a detriment to recruitment and retention of my members that I have now. Beside the fact of our community not having a ambulance service in this business, in the building. We rely on Shabana, a village, village close to her. If they do not or are not able to provide ambulance service for a length of time, I have to get a secondary C. Most likely it'll be a private company, private ambulance service that I would have to seek out to live in our station and to cover twenty-four seven. It will be extremely difficult to find one company that would want to have any ties with a building that close to the facility of that nature. Not to mention that it's difficult to get guys and girls into our house to train. It will be even more detrimental to trying to even get anything to stay there.
Everybody hasn't spoken. What's that?
Again, I'm Cassandra Gatchock, the attorney for the village. I want to say that I understand that the letter that I wrote was prior to the testimony received today. I do understand that Mr. Cabo hopes and believes that his system will not cause odors and that the septic system and that the septic system will function properly. And that the sounds won't be an issue. However, I heard the hesitation in his voice. He, and I, I'm not blaming him. He cannot guarantee that. And the concern that the village has is with that possibility. Again, I understand that his intention is for it to be state of the art and better than the one that he had previously. But all the village has to go off of is the prior facility and their negative experiences with that. I hope that the board recognizes that it is probably not common for a municipality to have their village attorney come in something like this. They are willing to pay me to be here to speak on their behalf because of how strongly they feel. We had a meeting in November that many, many, many residents came to to ensure that the village board was not in favor of this project. The village has no issue with Mr. Cabo wanting to build his facility. The concern is with the location. I had previously been talking to his attorney about other areas. So it's not something that they're against, it's the location. I think we've already gone over, this is not in line with the comprehensive plan for Lee County. It's not in line with the comprehensive plan of DeKalb County. Lee County is a very lower income area. This is not something that they want to be faced with. They struggle with getting businesses to the area as it is. And they believe that this would be further detrimental. They struggle getting people to the village and their belief is that this will be more detrimental. With this facility, there's no one that will benefit except for Mr. Cabo. To allow one individual's needs and wants to take priority, priority over the entire village, the health, welfare, enjoyment of their homes and property is simply not fair. The village is adamantly requesting that the board deny this petition.
We have to. Yeah, that's no.
Is there anyone on Zoom that needs to speak?
No. Ready, proceed.
Okay. Finding is a fact. Finding is a fact. First item, effective proposed use upon the character of the neighborhood.
I got a statement, the village of Lee's future land use and Lee County's comprehensive plan for that area is not appropriate for a slaughterhouse along the property in question. Although the property in question is suited to existing classification. Is that all that?
No, you're going to have to lend me that so that you can. Yeah, right now you've got several items in here.
You want to work out for that, let's.
Why don't, why don't you be described this time?
Please use your mic.
What? Oh, you're, who are you talking to, Mike or I?
Mike, Mike needs to use the microphone.
So effective of proposed use upon the character of the neighborhood. The first one I had wrote down was the village of Lee's future land use and Lee County's comprehensive plan for that area is not appropriate for a slaughterhouse. Although the property is suited to its existing classification, which is agriculture. Which means that it is, slaughterhouses are acceptable in ag land.
Right.
But both Lee's future land use and Lee County's comprehensive plan does not support slaughterhouses.
Correct.
So that's, that's one I have there. Second one I got is the proposed location could minimize residential growth with the surrounding area's character by being located so close to the village of Lee. Which that's, that's been discussed. The third one I, I wrote down was the children's park across the street. When you start to talk about character of the neighborhood. So, number three I've got, obviously that. Anything else? Anybody else want to say anything?
No, I questioned the one about the children's park with the property being fully enclosed and back off. But um, I understand that while they aren't facts, the residents have expressed concerns, so.
Well, it's a fact it's across the street.
Well, yeah, but it, that it would be detrimental to us is, is not a fact.
No, no, but it, 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 it affects the character of the neighborhood.
Yes, it may.
No, any, anything to add?
Want to put that in? If everybody's done, if nobody wants to add anything else.
Yep. I think we're good.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
So the second one is the effect of the proposed use upon traffic conditions.
Very low.
I would, yeah, I was going to say nominal impact. It would appear by testimony that it's placed, it's placed where it is specifically because of concerns on the traffic or at least the road load. Plus, um, the number of vehicles moving in and out of there is nominal. So I would say effective of the proposed use upon traffic conditions is nominal.
Nominal. It was stated that there was one truck in on Tuesday and Thursdays, one truck out on Wednesday and Friday.
Yep, yep.
And the employee is coming to and from what goes through the three, four days.
And you call that nominal then?
Yes.
So, I, I just want to add that the, that it access would have to be off of County Line Road because the weight restriction is on Lee Road.
Yes.
They can have both roads, but they're both accessible.
Right, weight limits are on Lee Road.
I'll make that a motion.
A motion in a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. 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 All opposed? Motion carries.
Number three is the effect of the proposed use on public utilities, public facilities.
Utility facility, um, it appears based on testimony that although city water could be used, um, it does not appear that it's necessarily used. There's going to be a septic field with what appears to be more than adequate capacity. So I would say that the effect of proposed use upon public utility facilities is nonexistent.
So maybe city water, but their own septic system.
And they don't need to use city water either if they can, if they can bring that well up. He's, he's got options with that, so. I'd, I'd say it's, I mean, if not negligible, it's nominal.
I'm going to say maybe city water, but under testimony, he stated they would use their own water.
Yep.
Okay, that'd be a motion.
So read it back as you wrote it down.
I was going to say maybe city water, but under testimony, in the testimony, they stated they would use their own well and their own septic system. So the result is minimal effect.
Yep.
Or nominal effect. Nominal effect.
Okay. I'll make that a motion.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, number four, the effect of the proposed use upon public health, public safety and our general welfare. One statement that stood out to me was that it would place a heavy burden, I guess it come out of the letter from the, from the city. It would place a heavy burden on the village while providing very little benefit to the residents.
Except, and I, and I have a problem with that because as the city's attorney admitted in closing, that the statement from the city, um, or the letter from the city was done without facts or presentation by Mr. Cabo. And that they do not have, um, one need for the water isn't there, which was where that primary one was related to. And they have, did not have sufficient information on the, the development of the facility. How, how the septic was going to be handled, what the need for the water was. The efforts put in to minimize odor and to, um, make sure that the pen, the holding pen was interior as well as minimizing the transfer of the vehicle. So I have a problem with utilizing that city statement or that city letter from the negative standpoint because the city did not have reasonable facts or reasonable information when they put that together. Having said that, um, having said that, it's also a little bit hard to deny the concerns that the public from that community has based on the multiple letters and the petition with, uh, what was it, eighteen signatures on that petition. Um, so I don't see public health with their own septic. Uh, maybe some odor, but it seems nominal. Public safety, I see no issue there. General welfare is the one that becomes a biggest concern and unfortunately we don't have any good documentary facts. We almost have to go by the subjective response of the city and those people making their closing statements. So I would propose this motion. Barring sufficient facts to the barring sufficient facts to the contrary. And while not apparently affecting public health or public safety. I'm trying, I'm trying to say it's, I'm trying to say it's slowing up. There is an obvious concern by the city trustees and the general public for the welfare of the community.
Barring sufficient facts to the contrary, what did you say after?
No, I, I got everything. There is obvious, there is obvious by the city and public for the welfare.
Yeah, there was.
It's obvious concern.
Yeah. Hopefully Ellis, Ellis has it more specifically if you're shorthand in it.
So, so then one of the other points I was going to bring up is that, which is fact, is prevailing winds are from the west, southwest towards the village. Which creates a concern for general welfare.
Yeah, could, yeah. Which I guess that's part of the the abundant concern by the community.
Yeah.
You could spell that, yeah, go ahead and spell it out.
Okay, we got that? That's it, I don't have any else. Read it back to us. Barring sufficient facts to the contrary, there is obvious concern by city and public, by the city and the public for the welfare of the community. Point A, point B is prevailing winds from the west southwest towards the village. That would be my motion.
The only thing I would add in there is no, no documented concerns on public health or public safety.
Oh, Terry, you can't speak, I'm sorry.
Concerns relative to public health, public safety. And those, but based on those pieces, I would make that a motion.
We have a motion in a, in a second. Do we have any other commentary on it? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Chairman?
Just, I make a recommendation or a motion.
Didn't we, didn't we all want a motion?
No, that's all, that's all, there's only four of them.
Oh. I'm sorry, you're missing some on yours.
Oh, really? Only got four. I thought we were done.
No, we got five and six to go. Yes. Effects of the proposed use upon the surrounding properties.
Say that again.
Effects of the proposed use upon the surrounding properties.
Well, I have the same things.
Two sides is egg. And which probably is like, that was, school was privately owned.
Effects of the proposed use upon the surrounding properties.
South side's another house. house.
Well, you know, you can talk about all these other things, you know, you can talk about the traffic has an effect on the
I would, let's rather than, let's refer this to C items under finding effects one and four. Otherwise, we're just repeating ourselves.
Right, that's what I mean, we can use all the same ones. So if you read one and four, then you'll know what's wrong.
Look, yeah, I was.
Number one, proposed location could minimize residential growth, that really is. Well, yeah, that applies, yes, the proposed location could minimize residential growth with the surrounding area, area's character by being located so close to the village. And B was the, the children's park across from this, across the street. And number four, this one we just did. Barring sufficient facts to the, there is obvious concern within that, but it doesn't apply. Prevailing winds from the west southwest towards the village. Isn't that a lot?
Yep.
Number one would be more. So you could say the, there's concern about the effect of the children's park across the street.
Do you wanna do it that way, or just say C findings of facts, number one, or number one and number four?
Just say number one.
Okay. C finding is a fax number one. So we're using the character of the neighborhood relative to the surrounding properties.
I'll make that motion.
Like next motion. Second. Any other comments? Questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Effects of the proposed use upon environmental concerns.
So they, they'll be required to follow all state and federal rules and regulations.
Like the contained unit.
Yeah, well, and that specifically rela, is relative to the to the water and to the, more particularly to the septic field. But there were no other environmental concerns noted. Cause that's agricultural ground. No issues would be apparent under wildlife or wetlands.
There was a commentary from the Lee County Department of Health.
Yeah. None relative to wildlife lands. Will need to comply.
State, local, and federal regulations.
Yeah. None relative to wildlife or wetlands will need to comply with all state, federal, state and federal and local regulations relative to all other environmental issues. Anything else?
Don't think so.
And let's make, we'll make that a motion.
I move.
We have a motion and a second. We have a motion and a second, will we read the motion one more time for Hillary?
Uh, none relative to wildlife or wetlands will need to comply with all state, federal, and local regulations relative to all other environmental issues.
Have a motion and a second, any comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries.
Chairman, I'd like to request a five minute recess. And come back and make this, is that within our rights?
Okay.
Is it, I'm asking, is that acceptable?
Don't know that we've ever done that before. Yeah, but that was a bathroom break.
D.
Is there is there five minutes up? Ready?
Yeah. We're dealing with some technical stuff.
Yes. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion that we recommend to the full county board approval of this petition.
Please present.
Let's present.
Roll call?
I need a second.
Second. Okay. Any discussion?
I'd like a roll call vote.
Okay. No.
No. No.
No.
No. Denied on a five oh. I'd, I'd like to, I'd like to make this final statement relative to this. I think what Mr. Cabo is, Cabo is trying to do is appropriate. I am deeply concerned that the the village of Lee did not have him make a presentation for, especially based on the fact that the city said that there were multiple people there, they had time to have the public there and not have the individual there. I thought with, I think is a absolute travesty. As the city attorney admitted in her closing statement, there was insufficient information. There wasn't the information from Mr. Cabo that should have been presented to both the community and the village relative to the efforts that he was making with the septic field with the control of, with the control of the odor, with the control of the visual impact with maintaining the holding interior, which many people referenced in their, in their reasons for turning down the issues, many of those, if not all the issues that they talked about were being addressed with the new facility. But I realize that there is two concerns there, one is the fact that, the primary one being the fact that it does not fit in with the villages or the counties comprehensive plan, and those are appropriate. And there's not much you can do despite the fact that the sound and the odor would be, would be declined. Not much you can do about people's perception relative to that park being across the street. But having said that, if they had had the opportunity to invite Mr. Cabo to the village meeting, when they discussed this, they may have had a better foundation, everybody may have had a better foundation for information. And maybe have been more helpful to Mr. Cabo in finding an alternative location or at least in helping him address his presentation here to us. Or he may have been able to save himself both time and money in turn, in relative even coming to us at this point. So although I understand the community's concerns and I have voted against recommending to the full board, I do think that a lot of it falls both on the community as individuals and in particular on the trustees of the village for not handling it in what I would deem to be a proper manner on their, on their situation.
Any further comments? Travel, it did not pass this board, it'll go before the full county board on the 21st of it'll go before the full county board, they'll take our recommendation and make a recommendation themselves. And they're the final, the final people to do that. We're, we're, we're a recommending board, so it, but they'll do that on the 21st of this that's up to you. Well, thank you for your time, all right.
Are we gonna adjourn?
Are we going to what?
Adjourn?
Yes, we're going to adjourn until after recess.
Or recess, sorry.
Kind of recess until after county board meeting in our next meetings. Glenn makes that motion, is there a second? All in favor, stand up.
There you go.
There we go.